For coming to our work session, um, when we get up, we'll say the pledge of allegiance in a moment aside. Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just wanna thank everybody for being here tonight, um, and I wanna thank the trustees for coming and our board members. I just wanna let everybody know Tim will be here, he's running really late, it's his daughter's birthday, they're having a birthday cake. Um, I know a lot of things have gone on Facebook about comments and stuff like that, and I just wanna let you all know that we are not having pu- public comments while we go through the IMAs, meeting together as a village and a town just to kind of go through an agreement that we've had for ten years in place. It is expiring as of December fourth of this year. Um, this agreement, like I said, has been filed for ten years, and then they had one even before that. I don't know, a lot of people here know, maybe some don't, but the village and the town have a lot of shared services. We share the police department, you know, the courts, the building, um, filling grounds, parks departments, and then we also have, you know, the village has their building department that works with our police departments and things like that. So this agreement was put into place, we don't have duplicate services here in our town or our village. So we want to be able to go through and hopefully adhere to what we've had in this agreement that's been in place for several years. Just be able to go through and, you know, sign it and hopefully continue on sharing the services that we have. So this way we don't get duplicate services or things that are unnecessary for taxpayers. So again, I really appreciate all of you coming tonight and, um, you know, being with us and...
Can we keep going line by line or?
Can we go line by line, depending on how you guys feel?
Yeah.
Could you spare that part there?
Yeah. So do you wanna? Like with the number?
Well, anything on the first page, obviously the dates have to be dated and town hall has to be stated properly, dress has to be stated.
Right.
Sorry, get on page one.
This agreement was established with sole purpose of allowing the village to, uh, transition into the various municipal services and the government to run it before that. So the way, there- there's a- a lot of language in here having to do with things that have been accomplished, uh, over... That's one of the reasons I asked whether the attorney would do that, because it seems to me that much of this goes away because it's a fait accompli, it's no longer an issue. And the things that continue to, particularly that are shared services, need to be addressed in the IMAs. Otherwise we can enter a situation of, uh, at least from what I can read here, uh, a whole bunch of big questions that really will affect the residents, both in terms of the smooth operation of these services and secondly, the potential costs of litigating, the, the, the resolution of the issues, because in one way or the other, this has to be resolved. And it- it's kind of s- silly for it to have to be resolved in a court.
Right.
I agree. Anyway, so, anyway, that's why I, and the, and the third, fourth paragraph, um, like I say, that's a historical, it's just kind of historical, and it basically sets the framework for what it was to do then. I think what this, we need, the language needs to be changed, that this is to, in order to continue and update the agreement of for September twenty fourteen.
I agree. I think the, the first page is sort of the mostly what we call housekeeping.
Right.
Just updating, uh, dates, uh, context, et cetera, et cetera. Um, unless you guys have something you'd like to add.
Most of the agreement is different areas, but we're gonna have to tell this is most of them. Yeah, most of the agreement is gonna be, or a good chunk of it, actually the courts that we have to update are gonna be the dates and things like that.
And addresses, things like that.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we move on from page one?
Sorry, do you have anything on page two? Number one, police, the town, uh, town police department will remain a town service and a function that will continue to control the village and its residents and enforce all laws in the village, including the not limited to all village laws to be enacted. The village agrees that during the term of this agreement, including all the remotes there, the village will not form its own police department function, even though otherwise permitted to do so in accordance with New York State Village law, but will instead rely upon the town police department for such services as presently done. So we still share the service, you know?
I think we should stay as is.
And I just, I just wanna ask a question because I'm not proposing any changes, but I just wanted to try to just... Besides, I- I said to you Kate at one time that I do th- I do think that it can make business sense to bring the PD up to the village, but besides the way it was ruled out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Do you th- do you think that, I guess what, I just wanna get your, like, what your thought, like, let's say it was ruled out differently. What are your thoughts on that because it, it kinda, it, in a way, it makes sense to have... I- I don't know why it was separated like that, because to have the PD under one umbrella to ensure, like, for example, like, the building plan, right, how closely they work, to ensure that their, the services seamless between, and the relationship is seamless of... So is there a reason, are you, is there a reason, like, your, could you be opens that at another time or?
I mean, we haven't had any conversations, like I said, I mean, the mayor's put it out there, but he has not had any conversations with us in the town.
When I heard it, I said, well, that can make sense, I mean, I think that makes sense, but I was just trying to see what your rationale was, like, did you think that was something that?
I think from a legal standpoint, when we talk to our attorneys legally, you can't do it. And I think cost-wise, also, changing the town department over to a village department's not as easy as he says. It would be costly, the uniforms, things like that, and I'm kind of the person, if it's not broke, why fix it? You know, our police department's doing great, they're doing a great job, they're doing a great job for the town.
I guess I look at it for future, like, right now, maybe it's working like a well-oiled machine, but like when you, if you ever in the fu- if, you know, let's say we're not here, or some, some changes, everybody, everything changes, right? So if you have a change, I just think about, you know, would it, would the police department be better under the village at some point?
I- I'd like to ask something just for, uh, to my informational purposes. Would the village, I mean, it's not just a patch, I mean, do you, do you need to purchase everything?
A building.
The building, the cars, I mean, because it's already been paid through the town.
The town building.
Wouldn't it be like a transfer like to highway department or something?
Transfer.
Yeah, I could just comment on the transfer of highway department. When the, when the village was first proposed, it was going to be essentially a shell to cover issues associated principally with more village, more villages being incorporated within the town. In doing so, it was not well researched, and one of the major problems that occurred after the village was created was the fact that, under village law, a lot of the people that were working in the town had to be reclassified, and it's, it created a great deal of, I think, additional expense because they didn't realize that buried within this simple function of creating a village, it affected everything in terms of how people were employed, what their pension systems were, uh, things of this nature. And I think, one of the things we need to be very careful of is that, I think the lesson we learned is that it wasn't an easy nor an inexpensive transition. And I think anything, whatever you talk about, again, moving any pieces of the town's responsibility over the village has secondary effects both on the service and the cost of service and the people that are employed to give that service. And I don't know the answers to those, and so, at this point, the question of any further manipulation of responsibilities, I think, is fraught, and you wouldn't, I wouldn't do it without investigating thoroughly those aspects. No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that you would ask for why any, I think they did it because they didn't know when they were doing it, that it was as simple, it was as simple as they said it was, it was totally a different experience. And I remember it took at least two years for them to figure it out, and it was painful because the two budgets were never aligned, um, the elections were never aligned. I, you know, chaos would be an understatement.
Alright, so, at this point, we can just say that, but I just wanted to kind of just get a feel for that, because in my head, I thought when I heard that, well, that, that, that's, I can understand why it makes business sense, but, okay.
Like you said, for me, if this is how it's been for years and it's been working out, and the service has been shared, and they help out with everything, I just don't understand the point. We're not like separate towns, we're not separate communities, we're all Woodbury, we're all the same community. So having one by saying, just because I have this department, I need this, doesn't really make sense to me, at least, you know, but I'm opening, you know?
Well, I look at it as you're, you're in charge of the police, or the building plan, but sometimes, you know, there may be issues with, again, just...
But there's not a we're in charge, it's everybody, you know, it's a shared service, so it's not any one person in charge. It's, you know, that's why it's written in here that they will service the village, they will help the village. So the wording in here is like, it doesn't necessarily make us in charge, it's saying that we're all sharing it, and, and, you know, that's the point of it, is it's a shared service, you know? So I wouldn't really say that, I understand they're under the umbrella of the town, but just like, whenever I need anything, the building department's here to help us, they come into town hall all the time and things are going on, you know? They don't say we're a village, whatever, when they're coming.
Right, I guess the village doesn't really have any representation, like, right, like, you guys have meetings, right, for the police, right, don't you?
No, that's gone, the police division's gone.
Now there's the police commissioners, there's no police commissioners, so you don't have any, like, monthly meetings with the police? Because at one time that was happening in court.
Yeah, when the town board was the commissioner, that was the question.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's no more commissioner.
I just like this, I think the wording is, uh, this works, right? I think the wording is largely, it's good, um, at first glance at least. Um, I, I'm not aware that, that current employees of the building department and the police are having too many issues working together, I know they got them on the boat. Yeah, 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 a camper along with their parents, they've been, they've been doing things together, um, so...
Officially not about now, it's about looking at the police break.
No, it's, potentially. For now, I think it's better to leave, maybe. And, and I said this at the village board meeting, I mean, my comments were, I, I don't really think any major changes to this agreement, such as taking all the apartments, would serve either party well right now. But that may be my opinion, no one else's, so.
No, I appreciate that, yeah. Alright, the next one, the town annual control will remain the town service and function that will continue to service the village and its residents, I think that that's fine, that's, you know, they've been working fine with the...
This is again, falls into the same language, function that will continue to service the village and its residents, it's shared services.
And we're also helping the town enough, too.
Do you have an IMAs, one or two, or?
We do, we have an IMAs for their dogs, um, and then potentially cats, too, so, depending on. So we wanna go through every single thing, some of the things don't really, you know? So number three, the Proctor fee house, um, to remain a town bu- service and function that will continue to service the village and its residents, the non-for-profit Woodbury Historical Society and the Woodbury Public Library, together with all associated real and personal property of such town and noted entities, will continue unchanged however the village retains its right under village law to appoint a village historian. Are you guys okay?
Is that cool, yeah?
Okay.
Do you guys want me to keep bringing new things, somebody else wanna jump in?
I'll jump in, alright, number four. Yeah, I'm Robin.
I don't mind reading, I do it every night with my kids, but...
Alright, uh, number four, the town parks and recreations department and town park land will remain the town service and function that will continue to be available to and service the village and its residents. However, the village retains the right to hereafter create village parkland if it believes it to be in the best interest of its residents. In such event, the town will operate, maintain, and otherwise service such village parkland, which must be available to all town residents. The town will provide to the village the opportunity for timely and meaningful input on how future parkland will be developed.
So I know that that's one we're all kind of looking at.
Yep.
These things have changed. So the village receives parkland fees, the town has the parks, the village, uh, the town is not receiving the parkland fees to, you know, better or enhance our parks. So I feel one thing in there that I would like to bring to the table is to, um, you know, figure something out with the parkland fees. I know it says in there that the village has the right to create their own parkland if it believes it's in the best interest of its residents. We can even put something in there, like, if that happens and the parkland fees are shared through the village and the town. Um, I don't know how anybody else feels, but, and then there's also in there that says that the town will provide, um, for the village if they do the parklands, so that's another question we had. So is the village expecting the town to now have our building grounds go in and maintain their parks? Is the village, if they do the parks, go, you know, because in this language, that's what it's saying.
That, that was one that really jumped out to me, because that's gonna incur a cost.
Right.
Okay, if there was a village parkland that the town was responsible for maintaining, you're talking additional equipment, you're talking additional manpower, you're talking additional pensions, health insurance, uh, man-hours. It's, it's a big cost, it's a, uh, a double, you know, a double cost, uh, to expand onto that. And I think that, me personally, I was looking to add language for the parkland fees from the previous IMAs. Um, I believe it's somewhere's around three thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, is collected, for, Tim, if you wanna jump in here, for every new? Every, every new, uh...
Subdivision or...
Okay. So, you know, I know, uh, a few years ago, the town received a check for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in parkland fees. I believe previously to that was, many years ago, for seventy-one thousand, I think it was, but, um...
This is the, in prior, in prior, um, IMAs, sorry, in prior IMAs, there was a, a sentence that said, um, until and to the extent of such village exercise of that right and creating your own parks. Um, all future parkland and all open space dedication shall continue to be the function of town government, and all town and village code parkland fees shall be payable to and administered by the town.
Do you guys would like to see the page of, like, the old ones, so you can look it over, so?
It's, uh, it's right there at the bottom of four. See, when, when, with the last influx of parkland fees that was received by the town, we were able to drastically upgrade our sensory park, which was great, you know what I mean? And we, I think we as Woodbury, not the town, not the village, would like to be able to capitalize on these parkland fees in the future, to be able to continue to build what we have established in our parks. And by doing so, through the parkland fees that are collected, they're already collected. It's not, oh, well, we have the budget for this and the taxpayers are gonna pay for it, you know? It, it's, it's already been collected through the subdivisions, so, um, I like, I would like to add language in there. That colon, uh, that, that kind of reverts back to the previous IMAs. I mean, you got money sitting there in an account, I'd like to see something great done for our, our residents, because everybody goes in parks.
The reference to open space in the old IMAs, let's deal specifically with the parks, not any land preservation in general? The village concurrently conducts?
That's what I was gonna say, the village is...
That, that, parks, under state law, there's a difference.
But the village is actively seeking and working on making purchases of open space, and that's what they tag that money for.
Except that that's not like a law towards.
And we could only complain which in there that said, you know, it would be split according to how much land.
Well, you have to look and see how the parklands were, the parkland fees were originally set up, the, the way the account was originally set up and wording for the use of those specific lands.
Well, I meant specifically parks, you know, if the village had made parks of their own, then we figure out, you know, goodbye, how much percentage of land the town slash village has, is how that money gets insured.
As, as part of the agreement, yeah.
As part of the agreement.
It, it, it's a, it's a bigger problem than that, remember I mentioned chaos? This is, this is part of the chaos, because there's no question the parkland fees have to go to the town. The problem is that the village operates a planning board, which approves subdivisions in the village. They didn't think about who's approving subdivisions outside the village. We, we have a...
The funds belong to the village, they have the authority over the zoning and the land.
Yep.
Except that I didn't see that anyplace in the law. It's one of the reasons why...
Sandy, you know the history, it was transferred over to the village, why?
I, I didn't hear what you...
I said, you know the history, I, I knew that.
But of what was transferred to the parkland fees, go, right? Well, that's, that was, that's been a big question, because I've tried to research this and research this to when, uh, two thousand and fourteen, this agreement was done, and how and why the wording changed. And I can't, nobody seems to know, I don't know, Desiree, do you know?
Well, I wasn't asked during your research, but yes, the village, at the time, several, a couple of years ago, received a letter and the town received a copy of the letter as well, from then attorney Richard Golden, stating that parkland fees belong to the village. And the reason the building and planning and zoning went to the village was because New York State Village law stated that on January, mm, June first, after the election was held, when the election was held in August to form the village, the election to halt for village officials was held that November, so then June first, the building, planning, and zoning went to the village because the town no longer had just town property where it could do building, planning, and zoning.
But was Rick's letter prior to the IMAs? I was told that Rick's letter came after the IMAs.
I don't know the date off the top of my head, Sandy, I was not asked to pull that information prior to this meeting, um, but, and I'm speaking as village clerk right now, that, well, but, I, when I was village clerk. Um, but the, at that time, attorney Richard Golden wrote a letter under Mike Queen and was mayor at the time.
Right.
Um, to the town and the village, and the town attorney must have agreed to it, because it was not fought or litigated.
And, and Jim, just to, I think you're mistaken, because I believe that those for parkland money can be used for land purchase or recreational use, like for hiking trails, and for the village, if the village were to buy property and use it as a recreational piece of land, like for hiking trails, I believe that might be...
It can.
It can.
Yeah, for, it says in there now.
Well, like, that's what I'm saying, it says in here, I'm saying that the, the, the state's justification for having this fee was to provide recreation, you all, if, if a subdivision decides to put recreation on his property, he doesn't have to pay the fee. So essentially, this is to provide that recreation that the subdivision would have had to provide as a ten percentage of the subdivision. That's what the state authorized you, authorized both towns and villages to do. But in this instance, the town has the, the responsibility for all the recreation that was created by virtue of subdivisions, except now it's no longer getting that money. And again, I heard, you know, that, and, and the term he said, that the area of the town outside the village is still subject to the village planning board's, uh, policy, which, if you think about it, all the other towns around here, you think any of those villages have any jurisdiction over the remaining part of the town? It's not in the village or any of those. I think if, if the attorney said that, I think he's sovereign and safe.
I don't think that's what I said.
I believe you said that was the attorney's opinion.
Attorney's opinion was about the park property. Village, New York State Village law said that the building, planning, and zoning went to the village because there is no just town property that exists anymore.
It's not town property, it's area of the town outside the village boundary.
And what area is that?
Essentially, the area inherent.
And they have their own planning and zoning.
Which is where this really gets mucked up, that's what I'm talking about, the chaos.
In your opinion, yeah, in your opinion.
Yeah. Well, the town residents and Harriman residents.
Yes. But the town, the Harriman residents never paid for this planning, building, and zoning in their taxes because it was part of the B fund under the town government. And the B fund is part town and does not include the village Harriman. So because the village Harriman has their own planning, building, and zoning.
So I actually have the letter, I just found it, April, April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty is when the letter was received.
I did say I was not sure when.
Yep.
So, but what I was trying to say was, nobody could remember why this document that was done in, in two thousand and fourteen, why that paragraph was...
Yep.
That, I, that's, that was just my comment, it's...
But it's something that came, I mean, we can take it on the bottom, but I know the village is out, we're seeking property for that, and I don't know what that's going to mean, so, but we can take it on the bottom.
Okay, alright, yep. Town senior senator will remain a town service and function that will continue to service the village and its residents. Am I okay with that?
Yeah.
Great. Wanna take number six?
Town justice court, two elected justices, support staff will remain town service and function will continue to provide to the village and its residents until such time, if ever the village desires to assume such function in accordance with New York State Village law.
Am I okay with that?
Okay.
Good.
I'll take next, uh, the present town hall located at five eleven New York State Route thirty-two, island of New York, one oh nine three oh, consisting of its real property and structures thereon, it's its town property, but the town is authorized by New York. General municipal law, article five G, everybody agrees to provide to the village at no cost at least the same office space and other space, and access to meeting areas, audio, visual, broadcast equipment, and copying machines at town hall as enjoyed on the date of disagreement by the building department, consisting of the building inspector, assistant, support staff, vehicles, equipment, tools, supplies, and parking, village planning board, and village zoning board of appeals. To the extent that there is a village building department and or, uh, sorry, or other village use of the town postage meter resulting in such functions at town hall, the village shall reimburse the town for the cost of such postage.
So a lot of that needs to be taken out, obviously.
Yeah, you guys have your own building now.
Your own building.
And we're not located there.
Not located there.
And we're not located there.
And they're not located there.
We're not.
Oh, yeah, we're not, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the address has changed?
Yep.
The village has their own...
But the property is still there, we, you still need to address the court. It's still a town court, so you need to address the town court property in the same fashion.
Right, we just need to change that it says the town...
Well, that could go under the court, but this is just...
Yeah, where it says town hall is located at, we need to change that.
Oh, I don't see, yeah. Yeah, it's paragraph.
And now, all that's stopped, the village, of course, at least the same, of course, all that can be taken out now, because obviously, the village has their own hall and building department and everything.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know that seven even needs to exist, and that the, um, building, as far as I can say, can just be put into town justice court, into number six. Is everybody okay with that?
So you want to move on?
And for E, if the village water and sewer departments are in need of town highly department equipment and man, manpower to service the water and sewer districts during two thousand and fifteen, then the town provides such equipment and manpower to the village when available at a fair and reasonable cost. Well, obviously, now, that needs to be...
Yeah, that's a, that's a move.
That's, that needs to be...
Yep.
Uh, number nine, the town lighting district is a town improvement district that by operation of law and disagreement shall be municipal service and function that shall be transferred to the village effective twelve oh one AM on January one, twenty fifteen. Upon this day of the town, town shall transfer to the village all tax monies assessed and received by the town in connection with the... Upon visiting the town, town shall transfer to the village all tax monies assessed and received by the town in connection with town lighting district for twenty fifteen. Therefore, no later than February second, twenty fifteen, the town shall transfer to the village all additional tax monies received by the town in connection with its own assessment for the town lighting district for twenty fifteen. Together with all town, or together with all town general or other fund balance, when related to the town lighting district.
That's another thing that goes away.
Town refuse district is and will continue to be a town improvement district that encompasses parts of both the village and the village of harem. However, the town hereby agrees that if the village employee services are utilized by the town to service the clerical type duties needed in connection with the town refuse district, it will reimburse the village for thirty percent of the cost of the full-time salary of such employee. It being understood that the need of the town refuse district for such services is equivalent to thirty percent of a full-time position. Said reimbursement will be paid within thirty days of receipt of a village invoice for such services, which will be transmitted by the village to the town on no less than a monthly basis.
That's who was asking for sharing.
But none of that's being done anymore.
That's, that's what I was, I was wondering why we're.
I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I figured someone would ask.
No, no, that's.
That's no longer being done. Um, the town hired somebody to do refus themselves, so that whole paragraph could probably come out?
Well, it's, but this is one of those services that it needs to say the town is still, is responsible for managing refuge service.
They have to because they have a special district that includes a portion of harem that's in with the town with their.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. So if we need a paragraph that says the town is handling refus, so it's no longer a question of.
Yeah, so it would be something similar to the language to the senior center or the owner of the.
Or whatever, yeah.
Exactly.
We do this.
Yeah, we do this with the, and for the village residents.
Yep. All right.
Town highway department, the town highway department including the high paper, highway superintendent. Yeah.
I I know that even after the little re-did it because it was all transferred over.
Yeah.
But, but I think there is a part of it.
There's still stuff to see there.
There's stuff that needs to be locked in there.
Yep.
Like the bridges.
Yeah.
Yep.
And even.
Well, that's further on down.
Yeah.
So all that stuff, obviously, we have to change it over to village highway department. Should have continued to exist. You mean you need to go through that or just go to like letter A?
Sure, what part, uh, straight up to you.
Well, I think it's like A, A has to stay.
Yep. Yep.
Right.
Who wants to read that further, Kim?
Okay. By oper, A, by operation of law and disagreement, the municipal service and function to repair, improve, maintain, pave, construct and supervise all aspects of village roads, including, what is that? Culverts and bridges having a span of less than five feet shall be transferred from the town to the village effective twelve oh one A M. On January first, two thousand and sixteen, the village shall be responsible for raising the necessary funds to support such service and functions.
So that could come out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Could come out. What are we seeing about the?
I think you should just stop it.
Just with the.
Shall be canceled.
Huh?
Stop it, shall be canceled.
Yeah. That was all.
The last three lines.
So after five feet, when the rest of it comes out.
That's all covered under state highway law.
Yeah.
And then obviously, B, it's no longer necessary because it goes to village, hereby, this is the town highway department's building, we'll give it that, right? That's all changed over now.
Yep.
Just for clarification, at what point, at that I M A always had that that five feet differential within town and village?
That's take how highway law.
Okay.
So A is still operating.
That is still operating, yeah.
So that's, that becomes its own paragraph.
Well, it still stays under the, this, we're just gonna mention to say.
It's not a village highway, it's a village highway.
Yeah, yep.
C is out.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Those portions of B are going to continue to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So, on or after, it doesn't apply anymore?
Service and functions of repair, improve, maintain, pave, construct bridges having a span of over five feet or more. Melody Lane and Mary Lane road, roadways, being roadways within the town but not within the village, shall remain the obligation of the town and the town, town shall fund and make all decisions concerning when, to what extent and in what manner such bridges and roadways shall be repaired, improved, maintained, paved and constructed, which work to the extent requested by the town shall be performed by the village with all reasonable and necessary funds for such work to be paid to the village by the town. The village, however, will snowplow such bridges, roadways and make all necessary minor repairs and maintenance at no cost to the town. The village also agrees to snowplow significant snow accumulations on the ta- town Coach Wilson's Trail in Sin Veltor Lane when the town building and grounds department equipment is unable to do so and these are access roadways into the town Earl's reservoir property, which is utilized by village residents.
So, so.
So obviously, we want that.
Yeah, both those are the reservoir, simply reservoir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I wasn't.
Right. So we need like that to say. What do you think?
Well, I agree.
Yeah, this, this section has to remain.
All right. This, but it's not the on or the after.
Hmm, yep.
I think that we could condense a lot of this down to, you know.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Uh, E, I think is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, unless anyone has any objections?
You okay with that, Sam?
Huh?
Yeah. I think they're outdated.
The town. The town building and grounds department, including all employees, equipment, tools and supplies pursuant to this intermunicipal cooperation agreement between the village and the town as authorized by the New York General Municipal Law, Article five G, shall continue to exist as a town department and will service not only town owned buildings and grounds, but will also service the town owned building areas and grounds to be occupied by the village and its departments as well as all town sidewalks and the following village sidewalks along State Route thirty two, Dunderburg Road, Smith Clover Road. There should be no separate charge or charge back to the village for this service and function. The town shall raise such necessary funds for the support of the town building and grounds department to taxation of appropriate town residents as previously accomplished prior to the incorporation of the village.
Jay, Jay, I'm, I'm on the right side.
Yep.
I would only question that Dunderburg Road is a county road, so the sidewalks, I don't believe, are village sidewalks. And Route thirty two is a state road, so I don't know that the sidewalks are village either because the state put both the sidewalks in and the county put the Dunderburg sidewalks in.
Haven't, haven't we historically done them though?
The town has historically maintained them. But this says that they're owned by the village.
Yeah, I don't think they are.
I, that's what I just said.
Yeah, I, no, I, the, the reason I, I say that is I remember the issue of sidewalks on Route thirty two, then you being an argument that, you know, the s- the state wouldn't agree to do anything unless somebody probably the town at that point agreed that it would remain a local responsibility.
That's why I'm saying this agreement says that they're village sidewalks.
So just change those.
So just change those.
Like, if you, does that, does that not say that? Am I reading that?
Yeah, I would just take L.
And the following those sidewalks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So just change.
Yeah, because it, yeah, I think the sidewalks are village wherever they occur.
Except for these.
Except for these. I mean, well, Smith Clover Road is, yes, because that is.
Rather than due to state.
But I, I think, I think we have an agreement with the state as to.
It also says as well as the whole town sidewalks and following village sidewalks and long.
No, we, no, we don't. We do not. Even the new sidewalks that went in, trustee Frybin, there is no agreement requiring us to maintain those sidewalks.
I remember an argument about that way before they did all those sidewalks.
Well, that's something that.
But if we don't do it, it's really gonna come and plow.
Would be something I'm looking to perhaps.
I'm just saying that the, the town does not maintain the sidewalk, I mean, the village does not maintain the sidewalks? This, this, the village does not own the sidewalks and what's important to point out is when someone slips and falls on those sidewalks and may get saved, which we have, they are not our responsibility to maintain. The people who own the property adjacent to the sidewalks are supposed to maintain them. That being said, the town has maintained the sidewalks on Route thirty two and with Dunderburg Road. Smith Clover Road is a village road, the portion that has sidewalks, so that is an accurate statement in here. Um, the Dunderburg Road, I'm, my assumption is they do it because of the children that walk to school, if that's still a thing. I don't know if kids still walk to school anymore now. Um, but the village does not own the sidewalks on State Route thirty two or Dunderburg Road.
So, I think that's, yeah, we just need to clean that language up.
The building and grounds, you're doing that.
Yeah, so the building and grounds goes down thirty two and they clear off, like, the sidewalks. We have a little machine that they go and they clear the sidewalks when the snow happens.
But have they done Dunderburg?
I think we do, yeah.
So.
But it can leave, I mean.
Yeah.
Clean up the words.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the overall point is that it's, it's good and we just got to clean the language up.
And, yeah.
All right, you ready to work, Keith?
Okay. The sole assessor for the town and village pursuant to this intermunicipal cooperation agreement between the village and the town, as authorized by New York General Municipal Law, Article five G, and as otherwise provided by law, shall continue to provide the assessing functions for all town and village properties at no additional cost or charge back to the village. The village hereby retains the right on the village law to appoint its own assessor if the village determines that is the best interest of the village property owners to do so. I think that, uh.
That's, that's me exactly.
Yeah.
Support staff. Pursuant to the I M A, uh, between the village and town, as authorized by the general municipal law, uh, the town and the village will each make available to the other such support staff functions as mutually agreed to to buy the town and the village on as, when and if needed basis, not to exceed ten hours on average per week. There's no separate charge or charge back for the service of function.
This is the one that you want kept for the foil? This, yeah, this portion is currently being used within my office specifically for foil requests? Everybody okay with that?
No. Okay, I'm reading this. Um, the emergency response plan, pre-disaster mitigation plan and other disaster rate plans shall be the responsibility of the town to devise after incorporation of all reasonable comments by the village and implement. And such plans will be jointly adopted by the t- the town and village. All emergency declarations in accordance with New York State General Municipal Law to be made for that area of the town that is co-terminous with the village shall be made by the chief executive author, officer of the town unless and until such chief executive officer of the town is unable to act in a timely manner in response to an emergency, at which time the chief executive officer of the village will make such declaration to the village.
I think this portion needs to be looked into because the county, I believe, said that the village is responsible and I may not have this accurate, though I don't want to be quoted correct, as, I'm just saying, I may not be accurate. But if I recall correctly, the last time the pre-disaster mitigation plan was done because it involves highway, sewer and water, the county said it was to be done with the village primarily, so we may need to look into that to see if that's what.
I think we need to add a statement that would give the village the ability to maintain right, to be able to declare emergency declarations.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, we could probably put something in that says anytime it's rewritten, it will be rewritten joint with the village, not one or the other. They're written together, we have P D, they have fire, sewer, you know, it needs to split, you know, so it gets written together by committee.
Well, that's why I said you may want to research each individual plan, because like the emergency response plan, obviously, police, fire, ambulance, right? The pre-disaster mitigation plan is not related to those type of things, it has to do with your highways, your water, your sewer, um, and then other disaster plans, whatever those may be. So you may have to defi- define each plan and then have a catchall at the end. But I just recall that when, the last time the pre-disaster mitigation plan was being done by the county, because the county used to be each town did their own, and then the last time, if I recall correctly, the county was the lead and did it all with comments from the village or town superintendents of roads. So I'm just suggesting that that probably needs to be looked at when you're looking at the other things.
So that might make it entirely moot as to disaster planning for town villages.
That's right. Correct. That's why I said you may need to look into that section when you're looking into the other sections to see what has changed in the ten years since this was done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sales tax, in accordance with New York State Tax Law, Article sixty two, as a third-party beneficiary of the agreement along the county of Orange City and New York City and Middletown and City of Port George, dated September twenty ten, and every subsequent similar agreement that allocates county sales tax proceeds to and among the county cities, towns and villages, the village has the right to elect a direct cash payment of its share of the county sales tax monies to be distributed to the towns and villages in the county. In consideration of the villagers forbearance from electing to receive directly its share from the county sales tax monies, the village is hereby presently permitting the town to receive these sales tax revenue monies to assist i- in financing the various functions and services it provides in accordance with this agreement, except for sixteen percent of fifty percent of such ta- sales tax monies received by the town that the town pays over to the village upon the town's receipt of of periodic sales tax payments by the county. The town hereby agrees to continue such sales tax revenue sharing through December thirty first, twenty fifteen. However, and in consideration of the villages above noted forbearance in this regard, the town hereby agrees that commencing on January one, two thousand and sixteen, it will distribute to the village fifty percent of all sales tax monies received from the county within thirty days of receipt regardless of the period of time or sales that such county payments may present.
Maybe just.
Do you want me to explain that or no? I don't have to?
No.
I can do. Okay. So, prior to the village being formed, being formed, the town receives, for lack of a better, let's just say a hundred dollars, okay? Fifty percent of that was for police. Of the remaining fifty percent, sixteen percent was for building, planning and zoning, and the remaining percent was for highway. So when the village was formed, only the building, planning and zoning came, which is why it was sixteen percent of fifty percent. Then, on June first, twenty sixteen, the highway went to the village, so that's why it's fifty fifty.
So we can keep.
You're welcome. So really, it just needs to be the last.
Fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Or just that we're gonna get rid of it. Saving the next person, I guess, we could just. And, and the town will.
Just getting rid of all that.
Next year.
Yeah.
Is that, is that any, the fact that it comes in and out of the town budget like that, it would be simpler just to have the village take its fifty percent of it back?
The county will, the county will send separate checks, that's why it's, the way it's set up, the way it is.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The county, uh, commissioner of finance sends it to the town and then the town then distributes it out to the village.
Any villages, is that?
I guess that's the way.
It's not like Chester, for example, goes to the town.
I think it depends on when the last time the agreement was opened and discussed amongst those involved in making the agreement with the county. South Lumine Grove, I don't know what, how their division over there is, but since then, the two foreign villages, the South Lumine Grove and Woodbury and then the town of Paltry. I don't know if there's been a renegotiation between the three cities and the county. And I don't know if that was addressed in that renegotiation.
Well, maybe like, I just wondered if there was any, any bad work involved in.
The only people it causes work for is myself and Islande Sutherland.
I would say.
And we're cool with it.
I'd save you some work, that's fine.
Yeah, no, we're all good with it. We have a great working relationship.
But in this, if we're gonna, if we're wanting to know that it's from the sales tax agreement, we have to find out the last date that it was renegotiated with the three cities and.
So we need update on that language.
Yeah, I think it was just a couple of years ago.
Maybe we'll just make it rough as it occurs. Maybe we'll just make it reference the current, whatever the current one is.
It's supposed to be, but then there's been political maneuver, minor maneuver, so it's different than it's.
Well, like trustee Friday said, instead of putting a date, just say based on the current grade that the county has. That's why we don't have to keep changing it all the time. Make it simple.
So, they, they didn't work for that? So they didn't even have like ten hour.
Oh, it'll be that forever for foils, so.
That's right.
Um, everyone go with sales tax? Uh, the town of Woodbury Business Improvement District was established pursuant to New York General Municipal Law Article nineteen A, uh, particular section nine eighty F E, the sole purpose of providing additional security services for the property encompassed by and commonly known as the Woodbury Towns property that is wholly obtained within the geographical limits of the village of Woodbury, because the town of Woodbury is permitted to have this business improvement district encompassed land within the village of Woodbury, because of the village of Woodbury, but for this agreement would assume responsibility for special district from the New York Village Law Section two dash two-five-four. On and after January one, two thousand eight, the town and village of Woodbury have the ability to have Woodbury Business Improvement District governed in accordance with the intermunicipal cooperation agreement between the village and the town as authorized by New York General Municipal Law Article five G. I know you feel sorry. Written upon such source, the village and the town of Woodbury hereby agree to determine that the town of Woodbury shall continue to govern and control the Woodbury Business Improvement District on and after January one, two thousand eight uninterrupted as the revenue from the special district is directly linked to the police, town police services that are subject to the special district. Everyone go with that one?
We have to shorten, clean all those dates and everything, right?
So just stay cleaning up and shorten it.
Yeah. Yeah, do you have it? I actually know you can't because there was seven of these.
Yeah, the original agreement.
Eighteen?
Number eighteen, yeah, eighteen is, uh. The trustees have anything to input on that?
In some state and otherwise transferred to the village, Shane.
I guess the question is, does the town have any, any standing interest at all in the sewer district? If not, then there's no need for this.
Desiree, you have anything to weigh in on the sewer district?
Um, no, I don't.
On the town's end of it?
No, I do not. There's no, uh, the town of Woodbury does not pay as a government entity or have any comment into the sewer. I mean, if you want, that bill's like one point six million a year, you can have it. It was a joke.
I wanna make sure that, at this point, the town has no, is not a member of or party to the sewer district proceedings.
I think it's smart to double check that, to see if that.
Well, that, that's what I, I'm kind of assuming that's where we are, but this, this talk about transferring those things, they've all been transferred, so this may be able to be deleted.
I would say that it should be looked into to see if the IMA with the county and the members of the sewer district number one, if it still says town or village. I know the town does not receive any correspondence from Orange County Sewer District, but the village does. But that doesn't mean the agreement hadn't been amended, so it might be a good idea to double check.
We can double check that. Yeah, that the town doesn't have anything and then possibly, again, reduce it to a simple paragraph much like the senior center or the animal control office where it would just say the village continues to service sewer districts, something with that. I would love to figure that out.
You can come and read it.
No.
She doesn't read it. I read number nineteen.
Uh, shared information, the village and the town hereby agree to share with each other every report of their respective departments so that both the village and the town are promptly advised of the work and progress of all village and town departments. The respective village board of trustees and the town board shall submit each of their departmental reports to the other municipality within five days of the receipt of such report.
Will it convince any of, how often are the reports?
Well, I can tell you that has never been done.
I was gonna say.
I don't know why it's in there. We don't get resorts from air.
Yeah, I guess as necessary.
As necessary, because I don't think that's.
I don't think it's ever happened.
But it's never happened to my knowledge.
And so we still have this in here?
I mean, I would say, he- here's what I would say to that. I get requests from other municipalities frequently to get copies of our union agreements or whatnot, and we don't make them foil it because it's from one municipality to another. I think the same would occur this time unless I don't like you anymore.
I don't see a reason.
Adding that one last thing, you know what I mean, a safeguard so like in the future if somebody else is having an issue or whatever, it kinda safeguards that.
I mean, they're public documents. They're available, just going through the regular procedure.
And if you wanna know what happened to meeting, just see Jeff.
We can have a seat.
So are you taking that out or?
I think we, I like to share.
And then just like you said.
And, yeah, and just put as necessary.
But maybe you should decide who's really responsible for distributing that information?
It's gonna be whatever department of that department. It's at home, right? Village and town hereby agree to share.
That seems kinda chaotic, but sure.
Just submit each of their departmental reports to the other municipality within five days of the receipt of such report. Okay?
Hold that for me. Then would it be the village and the town clerk that just shares all the reports that they got in?
If it's necessary.
If it's necessary.
I, I think we need the lawyers there.
So, just don't stop sending them to the party.
Yep.
Great, last thing is the term.
Yep, um.
Term. The term of this agreement shall be five years, measured from the date of this agreement first written above and shall be automatically renewed to the greatest extent permitted by law unless, unless and until the village or the town at least twelve months prior to the end of such term gives notice to the other that it desires to end or renegotiate this agreement. In the event that such notice is given and not withdrawn, and a new agreement is not approved by both the town and the village prior to the end of the then current term, then this agreement should be extended automatically only for one additional five-year term. If no new agreement is approved by both the town and the village prior to the end of such five-year extended term, then this agreement shall terminate at the end of such extended term. So I think that's where we're at now.
Was it automatically, right, Desmond? It was automatically?
Yep.
I feel like there needs to be.
Just not to have it extended in perpetuity and not until one party or the other twelve months in advance say.
We need to open this up to do something.
Yeah, because in there, it safeguards you by saying you have twelve months, you know, to, to give, you know, renegotiate, whatever. But I don't think that there should be something in it that says that they all agree that it ends because now we're where we are. And if you're in a situation like this, you're not even.
Yeah, this is in between one row and Woodbury that something could, you know, it's Woodbury.
Right, in fact.
So, so are you saying get rid of the last?
I'm just saying leave it in perpetuity and leave it up to the parties to try to have one year notice if it means that you can go to.
So then, on page eight, the last sentence on page eight, then this agreement shall be extended.
We would change that.
To, okay. So this agreement shall.
Do you take it in perpetuity?
Why don't you just say automatically renewed every five years if you guys don't have a meeting about it?
Right. Want to do that one?
Yes, I know.
Keep it simple.
She was trained really well.
So then just get rid of the only for one additional, so this will be extended automatically every five years? If nobody's comments or reaches out twelve months prior, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So you just save five years?
Or five-year terms? And get rid of that last? Um, did anything need to be added as far as anything being created or? Do you have any additions?
Not to that paragraph.
No, I need to add, you need to bring it out all.
Well, the rest of this is kind of boilerplate language, it's already logged and murder modifications, savings clause, and the signature section.
While you're all thinking, can I request that paragraph fourteen where it says support staff? Just so that it's clear that it says support staff within the village and or town clerk's office? It right now just says support staff, but doesn't say which support staff? Okay, and, and how does it line to me?
Well, every other department is mentioned in here with the exception of my office and her office. Um, and the only thing that's being used in paragraph fourteen is my office with her office. So, knowing that you cannot tie a town clerk to what's being done in their office because they're elected, but perhaps it could say something in here about how this paragraph pertains to both the town and village clerk's office? This way, if another supervisor or board comes in and says, well, you know what, we're, we want, you know, that to be used in the parks department instead, then what happens to, I mean, it's really solely for foils. I mean, that's what it's for right now. Not just saying she can't say at one point, I'm gonna do my own foils. It's just, right now, that's just the ease of the office to work right now.
So after the comma in the first sentence, do you want it, would it?
Well, instead of saying the support staff, maybe it could say the clerk of the town and clerk of the village or something along those lines? Get rid of the support staff? And just spell it out, that it's for that, those two offices?
Well, that's why I was saying after the comma in the first sentence, as you said, if you say the town clerk's office and the village clerk's office, each will make available to the other such support staff.
Okay. And keep support staff in the first sentence or?
Yeah, because it's, it's like the, the title of that, that paragraph, so under, and, and then that's all it will address is the town clerk's.
I'm just saying every other department's addressed in here but town clerk and.
Okay, or village clerk's office. Or we can, yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying we should, you know, maybe pull that out.
Identify it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because that's what the intent of it.
Well, does, does that limit only the town clerk?
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we put that in there, it doesn't matter limit like the courts, right? The courts does stuff for the, uh, if the town court does something for the village.
That's operation of state law, because they collect fees, because they, because your section of the agreement says that they're the court for the village as well.
Right.
So all the court work that is village-related is through the court.
I just wouldn't want to limit, is what I would say, would that limit?
I, I don't think it would. Did you address, you address that department already in this agreement?
Question of whether these, I mean, identifying all the support staff.
I'm sorry?
I'm trying to think of an example.
Example, I'm sorry. I didn't hear your beginning.
Definition of support staff. That's, that's what I'm, in addition to it, what are the support staff, is there between all the departments?
Well, I mean, Joey has Liz, that's his support staff. Kate's got five girls and four, Gordon? Four girls in her office, that's a support staff. Ah, I said Joey.
This particular, number fourteen is particular to your office.
That's how it has been used thus far. So, right, because of foils. So every other department is spelled out in the agreement with the exception of my office and her office. That's all I'm suggesting. Doesn't have to, if you don't believe that you see it here, that's fine too.
Then, what that should just say, it shouldn't be support there, it should say.
That's what I suggested. Hey, we agree again. That's all I'm asking. If not, that's fine, you're.
No, that is, makes sense, doesn't it? Yay, yes.
Joey, I'm gonna just circle back to this thing just a little bit. So, the sewer district, we were saying the paragraph should be, what, just revised with dates, or just the village should take over each different membership?
Well, I think we're gonna research.
Yeah, double check that the town doesn't have any to do with it.
Okay, because I, I mean, I know it's saying all the sewer district stuff, but it reminded me of the, uh, the municipal water council. I mean, it's not similar, but similar, um, and I wasn't sure if that would somehow relate to any of these areas. And if we, both municipalities have membership in that organization. I know they're not currently meeting, they're trying to submit it back up, but.
I think that's an independent entity that you have every right to join as individual municipalities? That's why it's not addressed in the agreement at all?
That would make sense.
Kind of like the chamber, you don't join the chamber, you know, that's.
So we have the ones that we have to do a little bit of research on just to make sure.
Do we count that real quick or? Yes. I would take this into town, uh, invited this renewal meeting that we prepared a draft, I think the dead one. But I flew forward to what I was expecting. Forwards and towards.
About, will you do that?
Absolutely. I have this in word format if anybody wants it in word for. If anybody wants it in word format to make it easier for you to do the amendments that we discussed, whoever's doing it won't be the attorneys. Either somebody tells them what they are.
Correct. Yeah, strike throughs, write letters.
So who would like the word?
Similar to what we did with the union contracts?
Yeah.
With the new language, strike throughs, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. So like I said, you can send it to me, to the town, we'll go over it, we'll go over it with our attorney, we'll do the research that we have to do. I'll write it up, we'll pass on to you guys. We'll have your attorney review and then. And at least we started the basis by, I mean, we're accepting how many people talk and then, you know, it doesn't have to be so many people on it, whatever. But as long as we take what we did tonight, we go over it, we have our attorney, like you said, do the research, look over everything, come up with something and then it goes out for everybody to look at and come over with that.
We very appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I appreciate you guys coming.
Though we're supposed to be done with.
I put chocolate.
I said it's gonna be cookies.
And I guess, uh, if, you know, another meeting is to be determined.
Well, we'll try to move it back to begin because like I said, this is a conspiracy center course, so like, you know, we can meet with our attorney, we can go over what was discussed. We can even have him watch tonight, we have to watch the film tonight, so this way he has it, he has the information. He can do the research and, you know, he can get you the word and we can go over it and start doing on.
Again, it's gonna, well, has a strike throughs with additional language or deleted language and it'll make it very clear of, you know, again, similar to the contracts that we've done with the unions, uh, of what's coming out, what's going in.
If nothing major, if there's nothing for, I feel like, you know, it's, it's, obviously this has gone on for a long time and people, you know, have been hearing it, it hasn't been worked out for all of us, so.
Clean it up.
I think the biggest ask is gonna be the block. Start somewhere and. Just letting you know.
Well, if we have to keep going by good faith, then hopefully we can do that and we can put it into your hands.
That's a small enough thing that we can, obviously, that.
That's what I'm saying, if, if that's gonna tie up with the IMA, I would like to use it as like, you know, a good safe thing and, you know, hope that the village does when, you know, we do need the park land fees that they would give to us. But I'm not gonna hold up the IMA. Like Brandon had said, it was wonderful, wonderful, so, you know, we just continue working together and that's it. But there's so many more things important in this IMA that we need to get done, so I could hold it up on park land fees, don't you speak?
I do. So, I guess, you know, a little room to close the, the, uh.
What's the session? Who wants to make a motion?
Motion, you need, well, you need two separate motions, because you're two separate boards, so who's gonna go first?
I would not need me, that's you. Wait, let's do one at a time first.
Yes, thank you.
Jim, Jim, make a motion for the village.
Got it.
Make a motion, go ahead now.
I will second.
We got it all in favor. I know the bear is not here to do it, but. Thank you, how about the town?
To me, motion. I second, all in favor.